22nd, 2024 meeting for the City Council of the City of Lamar. I'm Mayor Kirk Krespin. You know, over the last weekend, there was a post made on Facebook. One of our business owners here in Lamar had made a nice post talking about how he had a moment driving through Lamar and really noticed something that had a moment of pride in his community. He noticed a lot of the different changes that were going on. He spoke of how a lot of communities in rural areas become stagnant, stale. And as he drove through Lamar, he could see all the changes, whether it was, you know, there was just a number of different changes he mentioned. I hate to, you know, try to get them all because there were so many. But, you know, just for a couple of examples, First Baptist Church getting their new parking lot, EJ's renovating their bathrooms, the ABBA Eye Care Building being purchased for the potential of a new business, of course, Casa Azteca and Arby's and so many other great things. And that doesn't even include just the major improvements that people are doing to their current businesses, whether it's storefrontages, signage. We just had a meeting a little bit ago for the Urban Renewal District where we have approved a new facade improvement grant. And that's going to be another business that's doing some improvements on their storefront. I guess the reason why I'm mentioning this tonight is because it was wonderful to see the positive comments about what's good in Lamar. It was great and wonderful to see somebody appreciating what's happening in our community. You know, those changes didn't happen because of the council, it didn't happen because of the mayor, it didn't happen because of the city by itself. This is happening because of the pride of ownership in our community, the pride of ownership in our business people, and the pride of ownership in you who's listening there today. So I want to thank you all for making that effort and working hard to make our community better. There's so many times when I've had people walk up to me and said, "I haven't been to Lamar in four years. I drove into town, was just blown away, look how beautiful it looks." Whether it's the flower pots on Main Street, the improved storefronts, or the new developments that are happening. We are in a good momentum. We have a good momentum going. We have a lot of great things ahead of us. We just got to keep staying positive and keep moving forward. Last but not least, I just want to point out, I understand that there were people in there that have their concerns, whether it's homeless, drugs, crime, certain things that are going on in our city, or tall leads for all that goes. Those aren't beyond the council. We are aware of those things, but we can only do so much at a time. So be patient with us. We've taken steps, especially with our brand-new police chief who's already just knocking it out of the park, and our community development director, and so many other pieces of the puzzle that are working hard to try to make, keep our community beautiful. So be patient with us. And enjoy the big wins because, or the little wins, because that's what makes a difference. So with that said, we're going to move on to the next item on the agenda, which is our invocation. We have Galen Burnett here. Galen, you'll lead us in the invocation.
Father, we do want to thank you for the progress and the blessings that you poured out upon our city. Father, we thank you that you have protected us and you've encouraged us and allowed us, and we're thankful to see the progress that we've been making doing. But Father, we still have some problems. We do have some concerns, and we pray that you'll be continuing to lead our city, our city council, our city administration, and the people within our city to look to you and to try to make improvements that will encourage us, that will strengthen us, that will bless us, that will be used to advance our community. So Father, we pray tonight, as our city council meets tonight, that they will have insight and wisdom in what they ought to be doing. Give them insight in the decisions they need to make based upon the discussion that they're having. Father, lead them and guide them and direct them. Father, we thank you for our city council. We thank you for our administration that we have. We thank you for the workers that are working here in the city. We thank you for your work in each one of us. Your blessings upon us. And we just thank you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Councilman Banks, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge to divide the United States of America into the republic for which it stands, one nation of America, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the time is now 7:06 PM. I will call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Joe Gonzalez.
Here.
Jay Lamotta.
Here.
Jerry Jenkins.
Here.
Kirk Krespin.
Here.
David Savala.
Here.
Manuel Temes.
Here.
Brett Bates.
Here.
Rob Evans.
Here.
Kristen Schwartz.
Here.
Lance Clark.
Here.
Okay, we've all had an opportunity to review the agenda. I did not see anything that needed to be added or removed. Did anybody else see any changes?
No.
I didn't see any. Okay. So then we'll move on to the consent agenda. Did we have any changes or subtractions from the consent agenda tonight?
I don't think so.
Saying none, do we have a motion to approve them?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify with an "I."
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Unanimous in favor of.
Okay, motion passed. Moving on to the next item on the agenda. The next item is the public comment in audience participation portion. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject that does not appear on the agenda. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each, and that is at the discretion of the council. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to speak to the council on an agenda item or an item that's not on the agenda, should I say? Doesn't look like we have anybody. As always, I'll go remind you that, remind the viewers, this is your time to talk to the council on any subject. So if you have concerns, if you have suggestions, ideas, or recommendations, this is a perfect time. We have it on every single meeting. And whether you're a Lamar resident or not, if you would like to come in and talk to the council and give them your suggestions, you are welcome to do so during this time. So just keep that in mind for the future. We'll move on to the next item. Next item on the agenda is our city treasurer's report. Kristen?
Thank you, Mayor and council. The first thing I wanted to report on is we got our official award of our DOLA grant. So that's for the wastewater treatment plant design and engineering phase. So we're really excited about that, and we're matching that with the CDS funding that we were already awarded. So the next steps for us is I'm going to work with the regional manager to get a contract in place, and I'll be bringing that back to you for your approval and signature for the mayor. And then we are also currently working on the CDS funding. They are running that through the EPA, so we are having to do a lot of steps to get that money. But we're working on that, working with JVA, and we're getting that moving forward. So we actually have to fill out an application with the EPA and some things like that, getting our plans together for that. So we are actively working on that one as well. So as soon as we get all that done, then we can move forward on the design and engineering phase of that. So that was exciting news. Thank you again, Rob and Kirk, for going over and for JVA's support on that. It was, it was a good teamwork on that one. So we're excited to move forward on that. It's a very important project for the City of Lamar. So we're excited about that. A couple other little things that I wanted to mention. We're actively working on the potholing grant that you guys had approved, that project. The inventorying is done, and we're getting ready to go out for bid for the contractor to do, actually do the potholing itself. So we're moving forward on that. We've had several meetings. Archery Range is moving forward. Rob's going to talk a little bit about that on his report. So we're moving forward on that one as well. Excited to get that one going. He's also going to talk about the dog park, so I'll let him do that. We just closed out, we had a grant where the fiscal agent on for the 911 Authority Board, Tess and I got that one closed out. That was for their equipment upgrade at the 911 center. So we closed that grant out. The audit is finished, thank goodness, finally. So I got it submitted to the state. I've been visiting with Rob, finding out which work session, what meeting. We can have a work session, have Ronnie come and present that to you, and I'll be getting you your hard copies. I'll go ahead and tomorrow try to email you the electronic copy as well, so you can start looking at that, and then you'll have the hard copy the night that Ronnie comes to present it to you. So that's exciting. Rob and I have budget meetings with the directors this week, so we'll be reviewing their capital replacement schedules, kind of figuring out what capital needs they have, and if they have any special requests outside the budget. So we're, we're moving forward on the budget process also. Again, we've had, I think, three more meetings on the Tyler software upgrade. Linda and, and Thomas and I, Linda, don't look at me like that. It's, it's a lot, but we're moving forward on that as well. Getting our list put together of all the users, so we can start getting people signed up for the Tyler University to start getting trained in their certain particular areas. Thomas is working with them on the technical side for the big dumps of download of information and things for them to start going through. So that is also moving forward. So it's a busy, busy place that we are in. And then I just wanted to give a shout out, and she's going to kill me for saying this, but I have an employee that will be here 40 years on Wednesday, so.
Forty years.
Forty years. So it's just unbelievable. You just don't have, you know, people very often, especially in that position, stay that long. So she's, she's amazing, and she's done great things for the city, and we couldn't have done it without her. So we're, we are transitioning her out next May. She's gonna, she's gonna leave us and retire finally, so, but we're working on that as well. But, so my office will be closed from 11 to 1 on Wednesday. I am going to take her to lunch. She didn't want to party because she doesn't like attention, but anyway, so I just thought I'd throw that out there, and I'm really proud of her. Anyway, that's all I had, unless somebody has questions for me.
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
On the wastewater treatment facility first grant, how much was that?
It was 680, I believe, 80, 80 or 88,000 from DOLA and 1.8 million from CDS.
Oh, wonderful.
Yep.
That's a great start.
So, yes.
And one more question on Tyler.
Yes.
When are you hoping to be up and running with Tyler?
You know, it's a 12 to 18-month process. So what we had to do was decide which module or section we wanted to start with. And so logically, for me, I think it was, it was the financial system because everything feeds into that. So we're starting with that one, and we're going to do maybe a few on the side, maybe the, the community development, where we might work on a couple of them on the side. But that's going to be the major one to get going and get all of, that's a lot of information. And so we are actually, September, October, going to be making, getting the information to them, then they start sorting it out. So we're going to be doing some cleanup of, you know, GL numbers and, and, you know, vendors and things like that. Linda's already working on some of her stuff, just getting stuff cleaned up. So when we do make that dump to them, that transfer of information, that it's not quite as a larger file, and it's clean. So we're going to start there. So we think that, you know, probably end of the year, first part of next year. We're trying to time it between major, you know, major events that we have to get going. But we'll run a couple cycles. We have to run a couple cycles of payroll at the same time, run some financials at the same time, payment of bills, making sure everything's equal, equaling out and balancing and things like that. So it's quite a process.
It sure does sound like it.
Yeah, and then we'll move forward with the rest of the modules after that. We'll do utility billing, sales tax collection courts, things like that. So utility billing will probably be the, it's, it's going to, it's part of that financial system too. So those two are really big and a lot of information. So we're working on that right now, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other?
I don't have any more, no.
Any other questions for the treasurer?
No, that's done.
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we'll move on to the city clerk.
Okay, so.
Thank you, Kristen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I wanted to give a report on some of the business going on in the city clerk's office. In the month of June, there were 1,578 sales tax returns posted. So that, that's just a small portion of what Missy does on a, on a regular basis every month. In that, she processed seven businesses, there were seven businesses and/or sales tax licenses issued to entities in Lamar, so that means they have an actual presence here in Lamar. And 15 were issued for out-of-town vendors. And then there were two licenses terminated for an entity in Lamar, whether it be an actual storefront business or some other type of vendor that may be here. Also, in the month of June, there was one lot purchased at Fairmount Cemetery, two lots purchased at Riverside Cemetery, and we processed six openings and closing, opening or closings for Fairmount and one for the veterans section at Fairmount. In the month of June, between Erica and Missy, they processed 65 electrical connects, 60 disconnects for electricity, 38 water connects, and 42 water disconnects. This was for residential services. And then for commercial services, we had nine electric connects, four electric disconnects, five water connects, and two water disconnects for commercial services. So I'm going to be hoping to give you guys a report on some of this information on a monthly basis. Couple of other things. I wanted to make counsel and public aware some changes to both yard sales and mobile concessions. Over the last few weeks, I've been gathering information from other communities to come up with a plan of action to help alleviate some of the issues with both ongoing yard sales and concerns with mobile concessions within the City of Lamar. Would council prefer to set up a work session to go over the draft ordinances and applications that I've started putting together prior to putting it on the agenda for, agenda for possible approval? I just need to get some guidance.
So I know Linda had talked to me, and Rob and I have talked about this. It's not a, not just a Lamar issue. This has been something that's been brought up multiple times over the last year, and it seems to be more and more prevalent as these mobile concessions or food trucks continue to expand. So we're looking at trying to find a way, just like other communities are, to help try to manage them. Because we run into an issue where, you know, of course, competition is out there, and I personally have received comments from, and calls, complaints from brick-and-mortar restaurants who are doing business next to a city, city parking lot, and a food truck will come in on a city parking lot, sell all evening long, and leave, and take all of his customers. And he feels like that creates an unfair competition for him because he has to pay utilities, he has to pay property taxes, and all the other, and his wages and his employees, and you have this mobile concession stand comes in, sells, and then leaves. So it creates a little bit of division there. I've also been doing a little bit of research about this, and I found two communities that, where the situation was they had so many food trucks, that one of them ended up closing their last restaurant, their last brick-and-mortar restaurant, because they couldn't compete anymore. So all of the restaurants that were brick-and-mortar closed, and they all moved to food trucks. And, you know, that's something that I would not want to see in our community either. So there has to be some kind of a balance between the two, and how do we find that? And that's with the purpose of looking at this either in ordinance or modifications or something that we need to do. And that, I think, doing a work session to have that discussion might be the best way. What do you guys think?
I agree with you. I think a work session, we can cover a lot of ground and get some great ideas from everybody here on figuring out some solutions to, with the mobile concessions and our regular restaurants.
And yard sales.
And yard sales.
And yard sales.
Yes, and yard sales. And it's not like we don't want to have them, it's just we need to find a better way to manage them and keep them competitive and make sure that we're not, they're not a, an issue for the community. So are you guys good with that on the work session next meeting?
Sure.
Yeah, good work. Very good with that?
We have a budget work session as well, so.
And that one's probably going to take.
The budget's going to take some time.
Exactly, so.
It's our first one, so it's not like, it's, you know, we need a little bit of time, Rob and I do, to visit with you, so.
Okay. Well, I'd like to get this done sooner than later, just because it is getting to be more prevalent. And I think as we get through the summer and deeper into the fall, we're going to see more of this.
Shall we come in at 5 o'clock? We've had, we've done that before.
Because this is, this is our, you know, just sort of an overview one. The next one will be the longest one for budget, so if we.
The first is not as bad.
It's bad.
If we can get, you know, 45 minutes.
30 to 45 minutes, I would say.
So why don't we plan to do like a 5:30? Can everybody do that?
Yep.
Yes.
Because I know this is important.
Okay. So we'll plan for a early work session and make it longer.
So 5:30 on August 12?
We can hammer that out and try to get something passed as soon as possible.
And if you want, I can send out to council, Rob, Lance, what I've put together so far, and as other pieces come about, I can send it out to you earlier, so you at least have a chance to review it, if that was what you'd like.
That would be great. Give us a chance before the work session to review.
Okay, and then, continue. The city was made aware last week that the Lamar Ledger's final publication will be on July 25. The Lamar Ledger was the city's legal paper of record. I, along with the city treasurer, have been looking into options that we have in Prowess County and surrounding counties. I did reach out to Lance, and he'd sent me some information. We do have two newspapers locally, the Tri-State Exchange and the Prowess Journal, both of which have shown some interest in becoming a legal paper of record. To become a paper of, a legal paper of record, they are required to follow the Colorado Vice Statute 2470-101 through 2470-109, which just kind of spells out what type of spacing, font, and everything that they have to provide, along with seat pricing.
Subscription.
Yeah, some subscriptions versus no subscriptions. Anyway, so we're going to continue to look into that until, in the interim of getting a local legal paper of record. It's my suggestion to use the Bend County Democrat or other direction from council. Bend County Democrat is a paper of record.
And that is a legal option in the statute.
Correct.
If you, if you lose yours in your jurisdiction, you can go to that neighboring county and use one from there until you can get something established.
So we really don't need to vote on it, we just need to give her direction on which route to go. So is everybody with going with the Bend County in the interim until we get one determined?
We have another option.
No, we haven't. Yeah, there's really not much options. The only other thing I would recommend, and I, I kind of mentioned this to Linda, is because we are such a small community, I thought it might be best if we just went to bid on that. If we're going to be working through the Bend County Democrat to get us by in the meantime, we can, that gives us a little bit of time to go out and bid it, just to make sure that we're being transparent on it. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, but we still need a little bit more time to kind of sort through. I've got a couple of questions for Lance, just on specific things that one of the papers had brought to me a question. I just want to clarify. Some of them, I mean, maybe one of them won't even, you know, be able to do it. So I, I think once we get all the information to them, then we can go through that process if they're both still interested in continuing forward. So I think we just need a little bit more time to do some more research and make sure that we have all of our facts before we move forward. So that, that's my suggestion, because I know I still have a couple of questions that I was asked actually today.
Are you good with that, Linda?
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that, and I can get the information for Bend County Democrat to administration, so that they have it.
Okay.
Okay, and that is all I have.
Okay. Any questions for city clerk?
I do not have any.
No.
Okay. So we'll move on to the city administrator's report.
Yes, sir. We, we have quite a few things here. I'm going to try to go through it pretty quickly. Copy with Rob was great last week. We had quite a few show up in spirit of discussion, so we may start adding some, some features to that. So I appreciate it. Thanks for the attention. And the next one will be on July 24 at Brew Under Others, or The Brew. July 31 will be at Riley. Friday with the force this last weekend was a great turnout, this for the police. We, from 5 to 9, it was, we actually had a great showing. The weather threatened us for a little while. We had a lot of, a lot of fun, and a lot of people met new police chief. I know the kids were having fun with their laser tags, and, so anyway, it was, it was a good meeting, and I think it was successful as far as community engagement. Let's see. We also, I'm going to go through the fire department. So the Cornerstone Resource Center, July 25, fun with the fire department. So this is a chance for the kids to, you know, interact with the fire department, get, you know, sort of like a Friday with the force, but this is with the fire department. Let's see. Oh, hiring has started on our police department. We hired one today, and we have several more in the, in the pipeline. So I just wanted to say thank you to the chief for getting moving on that. There is one, one other thing I'd, I'd like to bring up to everybody's attention, that we had a letter sent in to the, to the city on behalf of some travelers coming through the town, and they wanted to say thank you very much. And the officer, Bosa, said he was contacted by these three people who were involved in an accident. These ladies wanted to personally thank for, thank the officers, Troy Appel and Bianca Hernandez for their performance. And they said the professionalism of, of these two were great. I know that these two people were off for today, but I wanted to let them know we thank you very much. We're getting it from outside of town. I believe they're from Iowa. And while they were coming through town, they, since they were just coming through, they decided to, they gave them, or maybe it was Wisconsin, because they wrote a letter and it says, "Thank you for your help in October, a special thanks to the Bianca and Troy. Enjoy the homemade caramels and the cheese curds that they left as, as reward for their..." So anyway, they left a, a present and wanted to say, "This is what we're wanting for our outreach and for people that don't know us and spread the good news about us. I'm going to say thank you to our police department. This is what we like to have in here in Lamar, so thank you very much."
Oh, great. Thank you.
Yeah, so Parks and Rec, the Windmill Tournament had 14 teams, huge success, and it was full over there. So I, I don't know what the, the numbers are eventually, but I wanted to say that we had a lot of comments on how much they enjoyed seeing, you know, the city full of their events. And so there was a lot of business, and, but anyways, there was a lot of happy people for that thing. It wasn't quite as hot as it could have been, and a lot of food, and I know that there was a lot of questions about why, what's so big? They thought it was a big, huge tournament, sort of like the Babe Ruth ones, but they said it was a great job. Parks and Rec, there's a couple other things. The irrigation project out there at the dog park, it's the dog irrigation going on. You saw, I sent some pictures out to the council, but they're doing a lot of work. They got posts up there, so if you haven't watched the progress on the dog park, it's coming, and it is on the way, so it's not just an idea, we're actually executing, so I'm happy about that.
It'd be nice if they could just do an update on that on Facebook?
Yep.
Maybe Kendra could throw out a Facebook page or with that?
Mm-hmm. The archery range location. So before we actually start moving dirt and everything like that, we're going to get one last CPW approval. We, you know, we got a grant, and we're putting a lot of our own money and effort into this thing. But the archery's going to happen, and we're, we've got a really good place set up, and I know Pat's involved, and we're going to be getting, we want to make sure that CPW gives us one more go ahead before we actually move dirt and get this. Because we've had, you know, T-God involved and our engineers, and so we want to get this right. It's going to be a real neat thing. I went out there and saw where they're going to be putting it, and it's going to be pretty cool.
Great.
All right. Public Works. They're replacing wellhouses. That, that last year, we had a lot of big hails, you know, events, and so several of the wellhouses were beat up. We, CF Meyer, I guess, was the one that, so thank you, CF Meyer, but bottom line is we're, they're putting those in.
I was going to say, when we were doing our tour at CF Meyer, he showed us the new wellhouses, and they were very nice and very durable, so.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
We're putting, a lot of people might have noticed, they were putting in a drainage van at Farmenter and Stewart. A lot of crews were out today. A lot of crews were out today, if you didn't notice, there was a lot of crews out there working, it was a pretty day, and it wasn't super hot, and it was really good conditions, and so I wanted to say thank you for all our Public Works employees as well, those guys are working hard today. Let's see, the library, summer reading pool party, I guess that's tomorrow?
Today.
Is it today, they had it today?
Tonight.
That was the official end of the summer reading program. I don't know how many kids showed up there, but I can imagine, I don't know if I want to be at a pool when there's that many kids there, but, all right. They said they have some upgrades coming for new blackout change in the community events center, or the culture events center. The culture events center, because, you know, it's right there, and the sun comes in all the time, so they've had some comments on that one, and she says, yeah, that that's one thing that they'll have installed whenever it gets in. IT, camera systems, they're still, we have a big camera project, they were going to be working on the wiring at the airport by Friday. They've been working back and forth real heavy lately, last couple of days on, with the vendor to do the testing, so there's a lot of coordination to make sure the rules of engagement are right, and, you know, we know what they're going to be looking for, so I think that that's another good thing that we've talked about, you guys said we want to make sure that, you know, so many years, you need to have those things. So I have one more, I know I'm talking really fast, you don't want to hear me talking the whole time. Community development, so the Lamar's opening last weekend, Arby's. You haven't noticed, there's a big wooden building downtown, where Arby's is coming, so it's amazing how fast they're working, and I wanted to say thank you very much for those guys. Lots of comments from those guys saying they love working with Lamar, so I think that that's another benefit, and it's something that you should put a further ad, say, hey, communities that work in places like Denver, Colorado Springs, if they'd rather work with us, it's a good thing. It says, Lamar, resident Andy Wooler and Wiley, are they going to hang a sign over there at the Watson Lake UConn Canada? When they ride by, and it'll say, "The 10,000 Mile Ride starts on August the 4th."
What is this one about?
So this is the Hokahay, and Andy Wooler, and who's going to be traveling, and there's a location where they, everybody brings their signs of their communities, and it's in Canada, and it's kind of a walking path where they had quite a few, so we did, they did ask if we can get a sign for Lamar, Colorado?
Yeah.
It looks like you had one made, is that correct? Wednesday, so he's supposed to put it up when he arrives there, and then was going to take some pictures and post it on his page, and then send it.
From Florida all the way to Alaska?
Florida all the way to Alaska, on a motorcycle.
Good luck, I hope you guys make it.
It's a lot of riding. So it's a fundraiser for an organization that they're working with for cancer, and things will be good.
So anyway, lots of great things happening in Lamar, I know it's been, it's been awesome driving up and down and seeing all the things that are good, so, great job, all of my employees, they were doing an awesome job, and I love walking, running around, when weather events come, rains, you see those guys working, say thank you to them, they really appreciate. So if you guys have anything miscellaneous you'd like to ask, Mr. Jenkins, I know you...
Anybody else?
Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry.
No, there was one thing brought to my attention, don't know who I need to talk to about it, but it's the crosswalk right there by TA at the lights.
Okay, by the bank side?
On both sides, yeah, going from north to south.
So that was something that was brought up for that Phase 3 of the Main Street project. As you know, when they redid Main Street in the center, they put the Hawk Light for the middle school, and then when they redid the south end, they put in a crossing light at, I guess that would be over by Loofen Jug with the lights, and then they also put one out by the college. So the discussion was made that we really needed to have one on the north end, so when they go to do that next part of the project, my understanding was they were going to consider putting two, is that right?
In two years. They're going to have a skip year and reset planning, because it's been nothing but construction for the last, you know, two, three years, so.
But they were going to be putting in some extra lights, because that is, you're right, that is kind of a dangerous area.
And they were just asking too, about, you know, maybe putting painting strips on the cross for a crosswalk, going from south to north.
Okay.
No, we'll get, yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to.
I thought so too, but it was.
So maybe Pat can request it?
Yep.
I've got a question, hey Rob, I saw on the agenda that Aztec Casa is looking for a public hearing for their liquor license, did they give you kind of an idea when they would like to open up?
Yeah, they've had several, several. When they open up, we're going to be happy about it and everything, I know that they had said July 4th, and I asked her, so I don't know for sure when he wants to, I'm sure he wants to have his license first, so I do not have a definite date at this time.
When I spoke to him last week, his thoughts were that he was going to try to get everything ready by the end of the month, and maybe do a soft opening like mid-August, but they were really wanting to get the liquor license approved before they opened.
Before they opened.
So it may be towards the end of August instead, but they may do a soft opening with no liquor mid-August, is what he's.
I hear a lot of people chomping at the bit to go check this out.
But they are back, and they're, they've been working pretty diligently, so.
Meanwhile, have ice.
Yeah.
Couple things, and I don't even know if this is on the radar, if it's down, you know, on the back burner, with all the new construction on Main Street, are we looking to update some curb and gutter and some of the handicap entry points for the sidewalks? Because they're looking, as you've probably noticed too, there's some that are falling in and.
Yeah, see, the coordinating and the timing with CDOT is difficult, because we have curb and sidewalk programs in progress right now, so they're on the south side of town and.
Side streets.
Side streets, so, yes, and if you, I guess we could say that we, you saw the sidewalk completion out by the community center, by that new parking lot, that looks great, so yes, we do, but there's no way I'm going to, I'd be able to tell you right now that we're timing it just right for.
Okay. Do we have any sort of idea of a timeframe when we're going to go to bid for the traffic studies?
When the police chief comes back, he's moving his house right now, but that is one thing that we've talked about, come to you guys.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Okay. Any other questions for the city administrator?
I don't have any.
Okay, so we'll move on to reports of correspondence. This portion of the meeting gives the council an opportunity to talk about any reports, correspondence, whether it was with the boards that they are liaison for, or whether it's something that's coming from their ward, so I'll start on the right-hand side with Brent, do you have anything on your report?
I do, have met last Monday, there was a letter of support written for High Plains Community Health Center to renew their designation for federally qualified community health center, which is very important for their operations. We also accepted some CHAF corporate giving funds, so some free money to support the 2024 Business Expo, which is, correct me if I'm wrong, Anne Marie, October 6th, the job fair. I can't remember the date either, but that'll help with some of those costs to run that job fair. As far as LPI, we met today at lunch, and had a great conversation with Anne Marie and Anthony Latour from Parks and Rec on some projects with the Pocket Park, and a few other things that we'd like to tackle together, both the city and LPI, and a possible project with the city, LPI and the chamber, so, that's all I got.
Pete O'Mahon, I've got a question. The first item that you brought up, will that work fair be held at the college, or where?
Yep, at the college.
At the college, thank you.
And this will be the second year, right? Last year was the first year, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think one of the things on our agenda is that we're doing one of our water board positions, and I think there's still an open position that they're still wanting to fill, so just letting, you know, people know the city that there's an opportunity to be a part of the water board, it's really a good and informative place to serve for the city, and anybody who has any understanding of the city water, we would surely like to have you put in application.
Okay. David?
I don't have anything right at the moment, excuse me, right at the moment.
Okay, Jerry?
Yes, I would like to send out a big shout out to Amanda Duffy and the Ladies Auxiliary. They're always doing stuff to help raise money for the fire department, for equipment and stuff. Right now, they're doing a fundraiser reflective address signs, and they're $25, and when you put them up, I don't know if you can see that very good, but you put them up, and when ambulants or police come, it reflects off the mailbox or wherever you've put it. So you can contact Amanda Duffy if you're interested in that. Also, they did a fundraiser, the Women's Auxiliary again, this weekend, they made 106 gallons of ice cream, and they ended up making $1,025.
Wow.
So it's, when you see these on Facebook, get ahold of Amanda, because they do a really good job on everything they do. And then for the, I have to look at my calendar, sorry guys. Public Safety Board, we had a really good meeting, and I sent the bylaws to Mike and Dawn, so they're going to be looking those over and get back to us. We had two citizens who came to the meeting to meet the chief, and spoke with Rob and everybody who was there, it was a good turnout, so like I said, we meet the third Thursday of every month at the library, you're more than welcome to come and visit with us, and that's it.
Okay. Shayla?
All right, the Airport Board met this past week, and we discussed some of the cost estimates for the reconstruction of the taxiway A, and also some ideas were brought forward about how to increase the attractiveness for plates to stop there and whatnot. The next meeting is going to be on August 14th.
Okay. Joe?
Planning and zoning has a met, tree board has a met, and the golf board did meet, and there's a few items for the golf board. Number one, their pro shop is quitting, his last day is this Thursday.
Oh.
So they are looking for a new individual, and they are going to a third party, like what we did with KRW, they are going through a Colorado Golf Association, looking for an individual who qualifies for what they're looking for, to open their pro shop and take back over the liquor license or something like that, and, so, but that's where they're at right now, Bob Haney's last day is this Thursday, and they're using that third consult to try and find somebody here local, or here instead of Colorado. They just had a tournament take place here, which was called the Local Club Championships, and the overall winner to that was Brock Reedy, and they're getting ready for another tournament coming up this coming weekend, which I believe is for the Elks. They are doing a tournament, and the tournament after that, that I believe is coming up here shortly, which is a very famous one throughout the community, for a great resource, it's for the Angel Open, for more hospice. And I spoke to Ron Reedy about that, and if you're interested in putting together a team, anybody out there in the public, you may contact Ron Reedy at 719-688-3419, and register your team with Ron Reedy for the Angel Open. And they've got two tractors right now, the golf board, they've got one running, and they just took bids on the second one, which their engine blew up in it, and they believe they may have found them a mechanic there in Burlington that can put that thing together at a very cheap price, I believe it was somewhere like $5,000 or $6,000 where they could put that together, which is, I believe, a $30,000 tractor that they're trying to save. And as of right now, that's about it, for news of what's going on on the golf course.
Okay. All right, on my end, you know, I want to just take a moment to give my condolences to the Motta family, I know Shayla's here as part of the council, her mother-in-law passed away this past weekend, and kind of wanted to give our, you know, condolences to her, also to Trevor Cho, one of our employees, who's a family member, Chris Cho had passed away this weekend, I, you know, I know there's many, many more members of our community that are very valuable and mean a lot, so I don't mean to not select everybody or not mention everybody, but I wanted to at least mention those that are with the city or nearby with the city, so for all of the families, we do send our condolences. All right, moving on, we will go on to our new business. First item is to schedule a public hearing for a special events permit for the Lamar Chamber of Commerce. This is something that we've done every year, the Chamber of Commerce will be planning for their Oktoberfest, they did offer to come in tonight, and I recommended that they didn't, just because we are doing a scheduling only, no reason to have a discussion about it tonight. So do we have, is that the next meeting, is that correct, Linda?
It is, so I'm asking that we schedule it for August 12th. I do have one thing I want to bring up, so it will be posted on site by August 1st, which is required by state statute, however, the posting in the newspaper, which would have been August 1st, and there's not going to be a newspaper, it is being posted on July 25th.
So earlier?
Uh huh.
Okay. All right. So are we good with scheduling it?
I move to schedule a public hearing for August 12th.
A second there.
Here we have a motion and a second to schedule the meeting for August the 12th. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Can you add us in favor, Rob?
Okay, next item on the agenda is to schedule a public hearing for hotel restaurant liquor license for Villa Azteca LLC, who is doing business as Casa Azteca Mexican Grill. Gerardo and Gerardo Sanchez and Estefina Garcia are owners of the Villa Azteca, easy for me to say, sorry. We will be looking at this for the public hearing on August the 12th as well, so this will be immediately after the Chamber of Commerce event.
And again, it will be posted in the paper on July 25th and posted on site August 1st.
Okay.
I move to set the public hearing date for August 12th.
We have a motion and a second to set the hearing date. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Can you add us in favor, Rob?
Okay. All right, next item is monitoring agreement with Great Plains Security LLC for investigations office alarm system. This initiated by Rob and Kristen, would you like to speak on that?
Yeah, I'll go first, we found out that we needed an agreement, and you guys have to approve them, so we'll bring it.
Has Lance reviewed it?
Well, he has, and he created an addendum, which Great Plains has approved and signed, actually, so there's an addendum on it, it's an annual agreement for $385 for them to monitor the burglar alarm at the investigations office.
So this does not change the original bid, it's just, right, did we bid this, or was that one that we'd bid?
No, it, no, it wasn't, this one wasn't a bid, it was just a very necessary thing that needs to happen, and we chose to go with the local company, we only have one, so we could get it in place quick, and they're getting a panel in this week, and getting everything set up, but we needed them to monitor, which requires an agreement, so it'll be an annual agreement, which will start as soon as the contract is signed, and it'll be $385.
Use them on. We've used them before, we've done vetting on them, so they're reputable and.
Well, this is the one that's doing the community building.
Community building, water, they do several of our entities already, so this is just basically in addition to that.
Are they still currently senior citizen as well? A senior citizen?
Yeah.
Senior center. Thomas has done here.
I don't believe it does a senior center.
Because I don't think they've upgraded the senior center yet. Okay.
It's tied into the fire alarm at the senior center, so I think it's separate, I know it's separate in me.
So we'll probably maybe upgrade that later.
I'll check in there and make sure, but I'm almost positive, because we've had to bond it.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Everything looks good to you, Lance?
No issues with the contract, I believe the last time that we have this contract with this company, we did the addendum, I included an addendum, as Kristen said, for the taper amendment. I also wrote a letter for, sort of a general letter that we can use going forward on contracts that have offsetting liability to the city for identification purposes, so it's just a letter putting third parties on notice that the city's essentially prevented from offsetting liability from the third party or accepting liability in lieu of the third party, so we have that letter going with this as well.
Okay. Okay. This was for the 385 per year, so any questions from the council, or?
I don't have any.
I know it's more than that, right? It's, that's just a monitoring agreement.
Right, and that's, yes.
All right, with no other questions. All right, with no other questions, do we have a motion?
Sir, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final questions, concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
All right, next item was appointments to Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. This is initiated by Anthony Latour and the Recreation Director, but they're not here tonight, so.
Well, I wanted to say that this is one of those boards where in the past I agreed that you could use city employees on there because of the participation. And they recommended that, one of our officers, Losa, also Losa, they're recommending that you guys.
So because he is a city employee, should we put them in as a liaison only, as a non-voting member because of liability reasons if there was, or because of? I guess I'm asking the question to make sure.
Well, I've brought that one up before about voting and non-voting on boards and things like that. And I'm okay with any direction, but as of right now, it's not, I know we've had employees on this board before and they were voting. So if it's something that we wanna change, we can do that, but as of right now.
How many employees do we have on this board?
Right now, none. We've got, there is another one, an ex-employee that wants to apply, so that would be okay too. There's one more spot.
I believe that's Kenny Junior.
Oh, Junior, I'm sorry.
Kenny Junior.
He was on it before. He was active. I don't think this board's been active since.
I applied for it like three years ago and never heard anything back.
Exactly, so it's been.
So it's been inactive.
And is there a touch base on that at all about conflict of interest, whatnot?
I don't see an issue with it. I don't see this having, from his employment aspects, the different roles that this is, this board's designed for versus his employment situation. If it became an issue, he could always abstain if that was an issue.
Okay, I just didn't wanna have a employee board or have it with all the employees on it and then, you know, no community, cause it's supposed to be a community advisory board.
Like I wouldn't let a current officer be on the public stage. I wouldn't let, so I don't, I don't think there's a problem with him being.
Cause they're different departments. Okay. Counsel, what do you guys think?
I move to appoint Nathan Losa for a three-year term set to expire February 1st, 2027, to the Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final questions or discussion?
I don't have any.
Nope, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
Okay, next item on the agenda is appointment to the Water Advisory Board. This is initiated by Pat Mason.
I know you get to hear from me a lot today, but Chris, the chairman, his term came up and so we're nominating, or they nominated him and he put an application, everybody made a recommendation at the last board meeting was accept his reappointment.
And it was published and it was out there for.
There is still one opening, so.
All right, any questions?
He's been on the board for 20 years, so he's vital knowledge, so.
Be good on it. Okay.
I'm making a motion to accept or to reappoint Chris Henderson to a five-year term.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any final questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Favor of?
Okay, all right, any miscellaneous items that we need to discuss?
I did have one more thing I forgot to mention during my report. Jerry, you had asked me to do some research on the speed sign.
Yes.
And I did do that and it has been ordered now. It was in the minutes that they had approved two. I got the explanation that they wanted to get the first one to make sure it worked and all of that before they ordered a second. So they went ahead and got that one ordered and I didn't check today on the status of the order, but they did get it going and it's being built, so I forgot to report on that last meeting, so I apologize for that. But that is what I found out.
I'll advise that it didn't arrive today.
Oh, it did? Okay, good, okay. So you know more than I do.
I forgot to add to my report, Corporate Cup is this week for LPI. There are no team spots left, but we encourage all of the community that wants to to come out and be a spectator. I think we ordered 298 shirts this year, so we have 12 teams. We, over the last, I think the last two years now, we've allowed teams to have more than 15 participants per team, but then there's an added per person fee and so we've got a huge turnout this year, expected even more food trucks. We extended it to four days so that Wednesday is just cornhole, Thursday is just the crazy kickball, so we're not fighting sunlight.
Those are crazy.
It's a really good time, so we invite the community to come out Wednesday. Thursday we'll be at the ball fields, Friday, Saturday we'll be at North Gate Park. And you will probably see a bunch of people in colored t-shirts Saturday all over Main Street for the community togetherness project. That is a requirement to even possibly win the Corporate Cup. So if you're driving around, just please be careful, cause there's gonna be people on Main, on the sidewalks, cleaning all over the Main Street area. Just please give them some space and drive safely. And I do just wanna thank the community for the great turnout Saturday for SEC CI's Fight Night fundraiser. Thank you Jerry, Kirk and Manuel for coming out and Anne Marie, Anne Marie and the family came out. It was great. It's only gonna get bigger and we really could only do it with the support of the individuals and businesses and organizations in town, so thank you.
Okay, any other miscellaneous?
I don't have anything.
Seeing none, we do, next item on the agenda is an executive session. Do we wanna move into that executive session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to enter into the executive session. All those in favor signify with an eye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Unanimous in favor of?
This executive session is for this conference with the city attorney for purposes of receiving legal advice on questions regarding the city council of SIRSA training. There will be no decisions coming out of this executive session. We will adjourn the meeting immediately following the executive session, so you do not need to stay online. Our next meeting will be on Monday, August 12th at 7:00 PM. We hope to see you there and we hope you join us. Thanks for joining us tonight.